Welcome to the Wayland School Committee meeting. It started at 6:05. We have our school committee members here. Jess Palzotti will be absent this evening. We also have our administrators here as well. We are being recorded by WeChat. We'll start with a welcoming call to order, move on to public comments, and then we'll go through our agenda. Just a heads up, we're going to be skipping over under policy matters. We're going to be skipping over 5.1, which is discussion regarding policy KDBA. So for the welcoming call to order, usually what we do is the committee members will say something about an event or something they've done with the schools since our last meeting that is a positive comment. I would actually like to use my time to thank Jeannie. This is Jeannie's last meeting after, I believe, nine years.
Yes.
Nine years. So I wanted to thank Jeannie for her service on the committee. I think people have no idea the extent to which Jeannie helps out. Jeannie is someone who is a consensus builder and someone who always, you know, volunteers to help out. There's so many things that the committee has to do, and Jeannie's someone who always is willing to help out with all of those things. So I just wanted to thank you, thank you for your service. And I know, like, I know I've learned a lot from you being on the committee. You know, you always tell the stories about times when maybe the committee wasn't necessarily fully in agreement, but once a decision was made, the committee went forward in a unified manner. And I learned a lot from you and appreciate everything you've done for our schools. Thank you.
Can I go next?
You can go next, yeah.
Because I have some prepared remarks.
Oh. You're saying you're one-upping me.
Yes, I am. On your last day, I'm one-upping you. All right. So I will keep this short because I hate long speeches, especially when we have a long meeting ahead of us. But I cannot let this date go by without saying a few words to my comrade Chris Ryan and my very dear friend Jeannie Downs. First, Chris, I am so very grateful that I got to know you so well. It is one of the best parts of the past three years on the school committee. You have been a wonderful leader and have devoted so much of yourself to the benefit of the Wayland schools. I know it has been an eventful and at times difficult time, but you have always been engaged, always been smart, and always been willing to look at multiple sides of the issues that arose. And those characteristics, I think, have made you a great role model for our students. I want to publicly thank you on behalf of the Wayland schools for all the time, energy, and commitment you have given selflessly to us and to our children. And in the end, you have always kept your sense of the ridiculous and your sense of humor, which has set a tone of resilience for us all. So thank you. And Jeannie, after nine years, what am I going to do without you? I have so enjoyed working with you and I have relied on being able to call you whenever I have doubts about what is before us. You have quietly, as Chris noted, and selflessly shouldered most of the burden of the necessary financial analysis and evaluation and the record-keeping responsibilities for the entire committee. You have reached out to our school community in the buildings to support their welfare without calling any attention to yourself. I don't know who is going to pick up your burden next week. You are always about others. Jeannie, you know I believe that you have a natural instinct for grace and kindness that has left its impact on all of us, our staff, our students, and our schools. I have a copy of my 2015 graduation speech here for you, which was your first year on the committee. Because although it was your Anna who gave me the idea, I really wrote the speech about you. We will all miss your expertise and your willingness to consider the voices of others and your ability to stand up for what you believe is right. I'm going to miss you so much. And most of all, your courtesy and your lovely, steadying voice, even when you are challenging the status quo. From all of us in the Wayland schools, thank you for giving so much of yourself. Do I have to know? I'm going to cry.
Thank you. Yes, that's way too nice. Way too nice. I was going to say something too. So first of all, to Chris, who, actually, we ran against each other three years ago because there were three people running for two spots, but we both ended up on the committee. And my first meeting with you, when like I was like bringing you kind of up to speed, was during COVID. We sat literally, we brought lawn chairs to the grass outside where the bagel table is now. And we sat there like talking to each other. And the first thing Chris said to me is, I just want to say, all the stuff during the campaign, you know, it was just campaigning. And I thought to myself, I don't even really know what he's talking about. So, and it's just been truly a pleasure getting to know you and working with you. And you've done so much for this committee, so thank you so much. And you really, you know, you've just, you spend a lot of time doing it and you do it with grace and humility and moving forward, so thank you.
Thanks.
And I was going to say, can I say another thing?
Yeah.
Okay. So just wanted to get my notes out here because I wrote a couple of notes so I didn't forget. I just wanted to thank everyone, like everyone, for the incredible opportunity to serve on the school committee. It's truly humbling to have the community put their faith in me for the last nine years. I counted today and I've worked with 10 school committee members around this table during my time on the committee and countless administrators and staff, teachers and support staff. And I'm in awe of all that everyone does to ensure our students have the best education. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for that. I've really enjoyed my time on school committee. And people sometimes ask how you can do it. And my answer always is, is there's a lot, there are a lot of great things going on in our schools. And yes, we definitely have had some tough times. And my skin is definitely thicker, which is not something that I really expected to happen. But in the end, there's so many positives in our schools, and that's what keeps me going. And when I ran for school committee, the primary reason was because the schools had been wonderful to our family. And I wanted to make sure all other families and students had the same opportunity. And if I could do anything to help that happen, I wanted to. Then COVID came, and my mantra on the school committee was grace. And I said it all the time at school committee meetings, probably ad nauseam, people got sick of it. And this year, my mantra, even though it's not really public, but it's part of what I, in conversations with people, is to assume positive intent. I truly believe that every one of us, the school committee members, administrators, teachers, support staff, families, and community members, have the same goal. We're all here to do what's in the best interest of our students. We don't always agree on how to get there, but we share that common goal. And I'm hopeful that we, as adults, can remember to step back and give each other grace and assume positive intent as we move forward. Because those are, that's what's really important as we work together for our students. So thank you to everyone for this incredible opportunity over these last nine years. And a special shout out to my family, who has supported me tirelessly through this. And without them, I never could have done this job. So anyway, thanks, everyone. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me go last. It's a lot to live up to. I would like to say thank you to the two of you for convincing me that this was something that I wanted to do, even though I've been cursing you for the last year. I am thankful that you took me into the fold and showed me what this was all about. I'm thankful that I've been able to get to know the two of you a lot better than that past year. And I will treasure our friendship and our relationships going forward. And you can guarantee you will be hearing from me in the future. So thank you both for all of your service. And your mentorship.
I know I already went, but I'll just say one quick thing. Thank you, Ellen and Jeannie and Erin, for those comments. I really appreciate it. The work on the volunteer work on the committee is really important, and I've really enjoyed it. And I hope for committee going forward, like Jeannie said, I hope people can have grace and patience and understanding as all the stakeholders work together. And I hope that the committee members can take care of each other because it's really difficult work at times. So the more people can take care of each other and support each other, the better everyone will be. So thanks, appreciate it, appreciate everything.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We'll move on, public comment. So everyone can please be sure to speak about what's in the purview of the school committee. Be respectful, provide your name and your address when you speak. And who would like to make public comments today? Okay? Is there anyone else who's looking to make public comments? Just show a hands if you don't mind. No? All right. So we'll do three minutes. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Nichols. I've taught eighth grade science at Wayland Middle School since 1991. I'm speaking against the test release policy proposed for our schools. I do not think that the job of the school committee is to write test policy for the district. I think test policy is the mandate of teachers, administrators, and the superintendent. We are the paid professionals in education, not the school committee. That said, as an educator, I do not think chapter midterm or final exams should be mandated to be released to parents, students, or paid tutors for review outside of the classroom. For our grades to continue to be highly valued and respected by colleges, our tests cannot be compromised by a test return that would prevent rigorous assessment of student understanding. Our Wayland community has worked hard to select administrators that have made our schools nationally recognized and exceptional. Administrators have worked tirelessly with department heads to hire highly talented teachers. Please respect our time and thinking about testing policy and how we help your children master curriculum. Excellent test creation requires time. Our middle school students endured four hours of testing for the English Language Arts MCAS because the state will not use questions that have not been piloted by Massachusetts students to make sure they are fair and clearly written. The strict vetting process for each question is why the state does not release all test questions to teachers, parents, and students. To give you a more local perspective, our high school geometry teachers just spent upward of 40 hours writing a new mid-year exam. Coming up with original and challenging test questions in science takes me hours. There are only so many ways I can think to switch questions again. I would far rather work with students on understanding the material than on writing tests. I would prefer teachers spend their time helping my children master concepts during their prep periods than test writing. Your teachers are in tears trying to imagine finding the time to collaborate on new, creating new vetted, well-written, multiple-choice, short-answer, and long-answer tests for every assessment every year. Sending tests home with students is inherently unfair because if you have an older sibling or friend who has taken the test, you now have access to it and can study from it. And your classmates will not have equal access because they do not have the old test. If you have a tutor, they will have access to release tests to prepare only the children who can pay. Did you know that some parents pay their tutors 240 an hour? Many families cannot afford to provide this to their children. Releasing tests clearly benefits people who are connected; that is not equitable. I think the test release policy would compromise teachers' ability to objectively assess students' understanding of material instead of their ability to memorize previous tests. It is critical to evaluate student understanding and would be impossible to create enough original questions for a new effective test each time. I would ask that you respect the professionalism of teachers and administrators you have hired to run this successful school system. They are the ones who are trained to make these decisions about what is best for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? No? Okay. We will move on in the agenda then to the acting superintendent's update. Dr. Graham?
Thank you very much. You all said it very eloquently, so I won't try to match that. I will just very quickly say, Chris, Jeannie, thank you very much. I think I really enjoyed working with both of you over the years, particularly the last couple of months. I really appreciate all of your support. I appreciate your leadership for the school system and everything you've done for the kids and families of whom.
Thank you. Thanks.
And now, true to form, I'm going to have lots of other people come up and do the heavy lifting for my acting superintendent's update. I'll start by asking Allison Zaguchi to come up and Nicole Haggus and Yupin Wang to talk about, and I'm not sure in what order you want to come up. Like, we have the Spain trip first and then the, just talking about a trip to Taiwan second. But they'd like to come talk about a planned trip to Spain in April of next year and then talk about a possible trip to Taiwan for the spring of 2024. And in your folder, there should be information about the trip to Spain. Hello from Allison, asking for approval for the trip for next spring to Spain. You want to start with that?
Sounds great. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your time. And Chris and Jeannie, thank you. Tonight, we are asking for two things from you. One is sort of an official approval for a trip to Spain next spring. And then kind of part two of our discussion is to get some feedback, not a formal approval, but some feedback and answer questions to help us really shape a brand-new idea for a trip, which would essentially take the place of our China exchange program, which is a trip to Taiwan. Nicole Haggus is our world language department leader. Yipin Wong is our Mandarin teacher at the high school. We've been so fortunate to return to international overnight trips. In fact, just last week, we had children all over the globe, it seems. Thank you for approving the trips to Italy and France, which went very, very well by all accounts. And we also had, as you probably recall, our WSPN staffers and advisors at San Francisco at the Journalism Convention. Quick plug, incredible honors, PaseMaverick Award, like wonderful things. So these trips are such an incredible experience for the students. They take a lot of work and imagination on the part of the adults who make them happen. And it has been a joy seeing these things kind of resurface in the lives of our kids. So I'll turn it over to Nicole to talk about our Spain trip, which is a return to a trip that we haven't had since 20...
2019, like the last year that we went. So I can give you just an overview, and then if there's any questions. I'd like to take about 20 to 24 of our students who are in our upper-level Spanish classes. And the reason for that is because we would like to bring back the homestay experience. So our trip to France, we did it more of a tour style where we prefer to do a homestay, but we were unsure with COVID and everything if that was the right way to bring back the trip. So we're really excited, I'm really excited this time that students will have the opportunity to stay with families, which will be really great. I'm hoping to take 20 to 24 students to Spain, April 9th to April 19th. So the students would miss a few days of school. We would go as a group in Madrid, do some sightseeing there. And then the company that we work with gives us some options for the homestay. So I have three top options. And I'm hoping to get Saragossa, Spain, which is kind of in the middle between Madrid and Barcelona. So that's our top choice, and the company seems pretty confident that that's what we'll get. And then we'll move to Saragossa and do five nights there or so in a homestay and then regroup and kind of reflect on the homestay experience, then go back to Madrid and come home. So those are the logistics of the trip. We would be using Expeditas, this is the company that we used in 2019. They really provided excellent quality trip to the students. We have a, we have a lot of planning here with the company. They have different programs, different curriculum. As well as when we get there, we have personnel on call to help us as we move through our trip. The cost of the, the cost of the trip is about $3,500. I also feel the need, while I talk about the money, to recognize Sarah La Jolie, who brought students to France. She did an excellent job fundraising this year. She actually got one student that almost entirely paid for the student's trip as well as assistance from other students. I do realize that it is costly, and one of my hopes in planning early is that this would give families and students some time to plan for the cost of the trip. So there are payment plans and things like that. I hope to, with 20 to 24 students, I hope to bring about three chaperones. And so those are kind of the details of the trip. Do you have any questions?
I had a child who did this trip, and it was a fantastic experience. I remember. So are the Spanish kids going to come here too?
So we shifted more towards a homestay model at this time. There is, for me personally, when we did the full-on exchange, so much of it fell on the kind of the teacher instead of the company. And so I feel a lot more comfortable using the company because they take care of the payments and a lot of the logistics of the trip. What we found when we went in 2019 is that students were just making natural connections. And so then, in that case, in those cases, students did come here from Spain. I feel more comfortable having a company that has somebody on the ground, really knows somebody, really knows people to help us, and has different protocol in place for different things that can happen when you're, when you're traveling with students, which can happen. So hopefully, the students will be able to make some natural connections and have some students come here.
Do you have any other questions?
That sounds great.
Yeah?
I think we were looking for a vote to approve the trip.
I moved to approve the trip to Spain in April 2024. Ask, present it.
All is in favor? I? All opposed? No one's opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Have fun.
Anyone to talk about the Taiwan possibility?
Yes. And so kind of part two of the discussion here is really seeking a meaningful experience, particularly for the students in our Mandarin program. As you'll recall, we have had, we had a wonderful gift of a really robust and exciting China exchange program for several years, which came to an unfortunate halt due to a number of different factors. And Yupin has done some really interesting planning and imagining for a trip that would be kind of in lieu of that experience. And so we'd love to present some ideas to you and gather some feedback. Not looking for a vote for approval this time, but we'll return to you once we've kind of synthesized some of your feedback.
So our trip, the goal is to provide learning, more learning opportunities outside of the language class at the school. So the travel trip will be in, will be from April 5th to April 9, 19. So it's a one week before the spring break, and it's spring break. So it's two weeks. And we are going, so the purposes is to, so they are going to, they will have a language class and they have a cultural class. And in addition, they are, they are going to the high school. So they, they will have a high, they will have a exchange activities with the high school students. So it will be two or three days. They will have a class scene. They will visit, visit the historical places, National Park, and the hometown famous architecture. So, and so they will have the real-life experiences there. And the institution, the university we work with is the Windao College, is a world language college. And they have years of hosting the students all over the world. They, they provide the language class for the students from the high, from the middle school to the university. And then also, they also have a close connection with the US Navy. They provide the language class for the US Navy. So they are very experienced to, to provide the Mandarin class for the students all over the world. And they are, they don't stay with the host family because Taiwan just is their restriction. So they are going to stay in a hotel. The cost will be, because the, because the airfare is very expensive, so the, the languages, so the tuition and the tuition is around 2, 2,800, but the air ticket will, if we add the air ticket, the cost will be around 5,000. So it's a two weeks. Yeah, so the total cost is around 5,000. And that's a little briefly, brief summary about the trip. And the, we, we plan to, to bring like 18 to 21 students to Taiwan. And we are going to have three chaperones. And Donna Fong, she's the coordinator of the China exchange. She helped me plan the trip, and she will be one of the chaperones. Yeah, and the other chaperone is the Mandarin teacher in the middle school, Jun Fang. Yeah. So three, three of us, we are, we are going to working together.
Great. Good. Any questions?
It sounds really interesting.
Yeah? Sounds great.
So this is, the idea is because it's unknown whether we'll be able to do China anytime soon? Is that, so trying to find something else?
The, the outlook is not particularly, as far as, I think we've spoken to Donna.
There's a lot of restrictions, there's a lot of restrictions, and there's just a lot of factors, political factors as well that are playing into it, as well as factors around COVID that have created a lot of problems. And we'd still like to, we, we have offered trips for each of our languages that we offer at the high school. We'd like to continue to do that with Mandarin.
Because I'm from Taiwan, so I know, I know all of like draw up layers. So in November and December, I had a several conference meeting with the Windao College Institution. And they are, they are very experienced and they are very patient. And they tailor the, the, the language class and the, the science scene, scene places to meet our needs and to, to, to meet our curriculum.
How many, go ahead. I was just going to say, how many students take Mandarin right now?
So far, 52.
So would this be only for upperclassmen offered to the upper class?
I will open to, the priority will be for the senior and junior. Yes, and if we have more spots, we'll open to the sophomore and freshman.
Great. And this is a totally uneducated question, but is Mandarin the primary language in Taiwan?
Mandarin, yes. It's our, yeah, Mandarin is our official, we have Taiwanese and Mandarin. And Mandarin is our official language.
Excellent.
And during those two weeks, the students would be taking classes at the university that you mentioned, but would they also be doing some, I would imagine, some like excursions and adventures and other activities? Yeah?
Yes, they take the language class, cultural class, and they are going to take the subway and the public transportation. And the college, they are, they also have the people to work with, with us. Yeah, so safety is the, is the first. Taiwan, Taipei is very safe. Yeah, so we will, we will have small groups, and then they will ensure our safety. Yeah, but they also have the experience to take the public transportation. And they are going to explore the night, the night market and try down. They have a chance to try the delicious food. We are going to the Palace Museum and the Taipei 101 building. This will be the tallest building.
So the classes that they take, will they be just with Wayland students? Or will they be mixed in with other students?
Yes, just for our Wayland high school students. We don't, it's, it's not a combined class. Yeah. And probably Lincoln, LS Lincoln's up at high school. Because the LS and the content, they also have the, when they see our itinerary, they are very interested. So very likely, they will have the similar trip during my time during the spring break. It's not a combined.
One thing I'd like to add on that is our national conference was in Boston this year. So a lot of our educators went, which was lovely. And there was a huge exhibition from the Taiwanese government promoting, promoting this program. So I think as we move forward, as the door to China is kind of closing, the door for to Taiwan is opening. I was really impressed at what they, what they had there at our conference.
How long did students do the, I only know of some people that have... How long did students do the, I only know of some people that have done it. I don't know about the program in detail, so that's, this is kind of like a silly question, maybe, but how long was the?
It was a full quarter.
Okay, so it was a full quarter, okay. But there's no way you could go to Taiwan for less than a two weeks, that's, it's a long way.
It's a long, yeah.
Yeah.
What I also like about this program is that that program, the amount of students that went, or it was very small, would be like six or seven students, and this has the opportunity to embed more students.
Yeah.
That's great. And you have things we should be thinking about as we kind of polish this up or fine tune.
Start fundraising.
Yeah, I can't think of anything else that was.
No, it sounds great.
I'd love, I'd love to go.
Yeah. Maybe you can shop.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, thank you for your input. And I think we'll make another visit with kind of a more final version of the proposal.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks.
Next, I'd like to ask Michelle Pro to come join us. Michelle has been helping to lead the implementation of a new K five writing program. This is something that was piloted starting back in the beginning of this school year with a pretty significant number of teachers and then began fully implementing it in January, February, I think. Oh, sorry, Karen Saxon is here as well. Karen, come up and join us. Sorry about that, I saw you earlier and then. And Karen Saxon, who's our K five literacy and social studies director. Are you all doing a presentation?
Yeah.
Great, so I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
We don't have anything in here for this, right? We're just following along. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, we have a few slides to go along with my kind of description of the process on choosing our new writing program. So I'll basically go through that. The first slide is just a general review of what we normally do when we're doing a curriculum review process. And we use that process while we did the, look for the writing program. So we started creating a review committee. I chose teachers and staff members from all three elementary schools at different grade levels and from different positions, so classroom teachers, reading specialists, special educators, EL teachers and so on. And what we started with is we started with a survey to teachers about the current writing program and what they felt were needs for future programs. We then took those survey results and we looked at writing research, research that's in educational journals and stuff that's out there. And we used those to resources, those two places and to create a rubric, which we used when we were looking at programs, we used the rubric against those programs to pick which ones we wanted to have reps come in and talk to us about. So we met with the reps and decided on a couple of programs to pilot. We provided professional, when we picked those programs, we provided professional development for the teachers who did pilot the program. During that pilot, we surveyed teachers about how the implementation was going, what they thought of the program. Myself, Dr. Easy, Michelle and principals went into like classrooms to observe the teachers teaching it. It wasn't as, you know, it was just to take a look and see how the program was running, like what the program looked like in a classroom. Based on the surveys from the teachers, our observations, we chose the program to implement, which we did fully in January, like Dr. Graham said. And and then we, what we did with pilot teachers, we provided professional development when they piloted in the fall. And then we provided that professional development to the rest of the teachers when they then implemented the program in in January. So that was, that's a general review of the process.
COVID did interrupt this.
Well, right, so the next slide is gonna show our timeline. So so that's like just a general review, right? We we researched, we picked pilot, we piloted, and then we picked a program. So this started, our first curriculum committee, review committee, was convened in September of twenty nineteen, which from the previous slide, like I said, we did a couple of steps. We did the research, we did the survey, we actually picked a few programs for reps to come in. Then March of twenty twenty, we in fact met with one of the program reps the day before everything shut down. And then everything, you know, shut down. So obviously, we didn't continue the rest of that year. You know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, we were really trying to figure out how to just survive and get our existing curriculum out to the students. And so that year, we did not do any kind of, we did not pick up our curriculum review. So this, actually, those dates are wrong. It should be twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. So September of twenty twenty two is when we reconvene the committee. No, you're right, you're right, never mind, you're right, you're, yeah, we reconvened the committee last year, yes, sorry. Because it was twenty twenty one, we went through, we investigated our options, we reviewed programs in fit last February and narrowed it down to three programs where we met with the reps in March and April of twenty twenty two. The three programs we ended up picking to take a closer look at was Benchmark Education, Xander Blauzer and Empowering Writers. Based on those like kind of reps and and our information from that, we decided, the committee decided to move forward with Empowering Writers. You know, sometimes when you have a, when you're looking at curriculum, you can end up going with two or three programs to pilot so you can kind of compare programs. We ended up not only going forward with Empowering Writers for a couple of reasons. One was that it had a Spanish component, which was very important to us, Benchmark Education had that as well. Xander Blauzer did not. And we just found with the representation and what we were seeing from the other programs, we didn't love them. So we figured, why waste our time piloting something? We were really excited about Empowering Writers and kind of see if that, we moved forward with that. And then if it didn't work out, we kind of start from the beginning because we weren't, we didn't really, no one was really too excited about the other two. So we only moved forward with Empowering Writers. We have, we piloted it this fall. And we had a good number of teachers piloting it. And again, got and got surveys back from them, did observations. And based on all that, we decided that we were going to implement the program in full. So that's how the timing worked. What, a couple of reasons we went with Empowering Writers, like I said, it did have a Spanish component, which was very important to us because the Spanish immersion program, already the teachers do so much translating and kind of double duty on the curriculum we have, they have to translate it into Spanish and find resources in Spanish. So this program has those resources, so, which is a leg up for that. And then here are a couple, these are a couple other of the highlights, what we really liked about Empowering Writers. It really has explicit instruction. So, you know, there are kind of thoughts of how to teach just in general. You know, the constructivist approach, you have, and then you have the explicit teaching. This really has the teach everything to students and lay it out for them so that they know what to do once they start writing. One of the big things that the reps kind of, what we liked about, what they said about the program was students who like to write are going to be successful in writing anyway. But students who are not so confident in it really need that explicit teaching upfront. And so one of the things that this program really does is that explicit teaching, which we really liked. The other thing that is really helpful in this program is that the students are, all the students are exposed to grade level text. So, you know, over the last five, ten years, we've really shifted our reading and writing instruction into away from leveling what students see. So like a watered down version of, say, a third grade book versus getting everybody to to experience that grade level text. Because if we, if they're only looking at, if they're below grade level and they're only looking at stuff at their grade, at their level, they're not getting the rich vocabulary, they're not getting a lot of things that their peers who are on grade level or above grade level are getting. And so in this program, everyone is exposed to this grade level text. They're taught how to annotate it, they're taught the structure of a text and the different genres. And we thought that exposure to that was super, super important. They have a consistent graph of organizers, which is very important, and a consistent language for teachers and students, which a lot like really any program's going to have. And that was one of, you know, a big thing when we surveyed teachers, what were they looking for? What were we looking for in administration? We were really looking for consistent language from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade so that students are not starting over every year with a new language of writing, with a new learning how to do something. It's really hard for a student to go from grade level to grade level and not know what is expected of them because their teachers might have a different way of teaching. So this is very consistent so that once, when they leave first grade and then they go into second grade, they're not taught something different. So they're, they can go right into kind of learning how to write. And so we really like that as well. So those are just some of the highlights of why we really like this program. And then our next steps are, we have curriculum work to do over the summer, to really set a scope and sequence and to organize materials. The biggest complaint about the writing program is the organization of it. And I've said throughout the year, if that's our biggest complaint from it, I'll take it because we can take that and organize it. So over the summer, we really want to, and it's also, the scope is really, really big. Obviously, every core program that you get, they want you to be doing that program every, you know, half your day, all day long, or every day, all day long, or half the day, which obviously we don't have time for. So we are really going to dig into, like this year, we were following the scope and sequence of the program as well, you know, as well as we could. But we really want to look at what are the real essential lessons at each grade level so that we have time to teach it and and we know how to teach it. And then next year, for professional development, we do have access to what they call their hub, their online hub. So we will have recorded PD sessions, they kind of have PD sessions that they run and they've recorded. And so it'll be a continuation of what we've done this year in PD. And they also have modeled lessons that are videoed, so I will share that with teachers. We'll talk about, you know, how the writing is going during PLCs, which are weekly. Reading, writing is usually every other week, or at least I'm gonna hopefully be able to do it like once a month with teams. And then I've been doing it this year, but I'll continue to do it next year, going into classrooms and modeling for teachers, just the lessons that are going on so they can see it right in person for their own students. I think that's it, that's the last slide for this part.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions?
I was curious about, you had mentioned that students who, I think you had said, are confident with their writing or enjoy their writing tend to progress better with their writing, right? Throughout the years. So how does the program address that? Like, what does the program do to engage the students so they are feeling more confident or enjoying it?
Yeah, so this program really gives a lot of models so that the students, again, kind of, other ways to teach or constructive way to teach writing is go ahead and write, do, you know, write what you want. And a lot of kids don't know what to write or they don't know how to write. So this program really starts out for a long time, big chunk of time, giving them the models of what it looks like. And to be able, and so right at the beginning, they're just copying what they see. And we've always said that imitation is the first, is the best, you know, is the first form of what they can do. They can't do it, they can't create it themselves or construct it themselves, they're gonna write what they see, which is totally fine. And so for a couple of weeks, a couple of months, they'll just keep doing that. And then they will get confident enough into being able to get their own, you know, take their own ideas and follow the same like structure that they've seen modeled, that the teachers worked with them and then, you know, that they've done physically themselves. And then they can kind of transfer that into their own thing. But it's a lot of background and lots of examples and lots of models with it.
Great.
So explicitly, we'll teach a skill. So if we want kids to, we'll always say, well, we need to add some details to our writing. So what does that mean? So we're gonna practice writing some details and then it's like the slow release of responsibility. So then kids are able to independently start working on that skill. So that's how it meets the needs of students that might really struggle with the writing component. And then it's explicitly teaching it and then kids are released, go ahead, now we're gonna write. And you're gonna write these beautiful sentences with all of your details. And kids are now like, okay, I know what that is, instead of just making the assumption that I know how to say, you know, the green grass was blowing in the wind. It's explicitly teaching the kids how to do that.
It also has, its models are very sophisticated too. So for students who are at or above grade level, it pushes them to get to that even higher level. Like we have a, you know, we have a third grade standard, you know, say that we want like all students to be able to do this. And then for students who can do that, we can push the students who are at that level even higher because the models that are out there are really, are really pretty sophisticated. So it'll, yeah, it'll kind of do that too. The other thing about the consistent language, and this is what we, the nice thing, the owners of this company were teachers. And so they relate very well to the teachers when they go in and they say, when I tried to teach writing, this is what would happen. And the teachers have all been, yes, it's true. What we were taught forever, and I did the same thing when I was in the classroom, was when you got to someone to conference, in a writing conference, and you would just say, well, tell me more about that. Oh, say more, what does that mean? So now they, the teachers have specific language to say, oh, do you remember our lesson on word reference? Do that, you know, do you remember this, do that. So they, the teachers also have the tools to not just sit with the students and say, tell me more about the, add more details. Doesn't, to a student who doesn't know what to do, that does not help them at all. So this gives a little, much more specific language for teachers to then use with students.
Great.
And I want to highlight one of the challenges that you pointed to. And it's the same challenge that we found when we put the FOS science system into place. So Empowering Writers, very high quality, very structured program for teachers. It also gives teachers autonomy and opportunities to be flexible. FOS, also a very high quality program, it gives lots of structure, that gives teachers some opportunity for autonomy. Both FOS and Empowering Writers, Karen sort of said this, assume that a huge chunk of the day is going to be spent on writing every day, or that a huge chunk of the day is going to be spent on science every day. So they have this incredibly rich, very broad set of materials and curriculum that's far more than we actually have time to devote to science. Because reading, or sorry, writing and science typically end up being, science is typically like twice a week that there are gonna be science lessons, writing is two or three times a week.
Right now is two times a week.
Yeah, which is not as much time as we'd like to be doing and we have a finite number of minutes in the day. And so one of the challenges with bringing in these high quality programs that are so broad and deep is identifying what are the things that we think are most important to teach if we're not gonna be able to hit everything the program has. So that's work that Karen alluded to that's gonna need to happen this summer and primarily this summer, but I'm sure that there will be, that will happen over the course of next year and future summers as well, is identifying the most important lessons and helping to sequence those so that it's not individual teachers to figure out, what am I taking and pulling from this to create that consistency that she alluded to. We'll have teachers then over the summer will be identifying, what do we want everybody in first grade? What are the lessons that everyone in first grade is gonna be teaching in what sequence? So there's still work to do on this. But that's one of the challenges that we face is that there's never enough time to do all the things that we want to do or that the curriculum offers us the opportunity to do. And it's a really good writing program.
I'm very excited and the teachers are very excited. There, at the beginning, there was very, very hesitance because the kids don't start writing right away. And and as teachers, we don't like that because we've been told for years and years and years, you get better at writing by writing. But if they don't know how to write, then they're just writing, that doesn't mean they're gonna get better at it. And so it's a big shift and it's still going to be a shift, like people, you know, it's, it's, it is a big shift. But for the teachers who started in the fall at pilot and now, now some of the teachers who started in January who are starting to see the products that the students are showing them, they're getting excited once they're able to see it. But it takes a while because there's a lot of upfront, you know, before the kids get to write. So that made people nervous, like there's a lot of talking, there's a lot of, are they really gonna know what to do? And they've found that they do know what to do. So it's, I'm, I'm very excited about it.
Yeah, it's, that's great. I mean, effective writing is so important, such an important skill and it takes a really long time, right? So it's, this program seems wonderful.
I also think it's gonna help us in our reading too, because a lot of it is, again, looking at text, different genres. Because a lot of it is, again, looking at text, different genres, how it's structured. So it'll, it'll also help in when they're, you know, when we're talking about reading, reading comprehension, they can go back, they can reference that as well. All these really high quality models. So I think that'll be good too.
Great.
Just keep visioning a hamburger. Because when my kids, we, they would come home with the hamburger fridge, you know? With the, and put the different parts of the writing in there.
And so I'd like Michelle to, and you'll hear some of the same echoes in terms of like the structure of approaching, you know, figuring out what pilots and what we want to do, and talking about where we are with our elementary math pilot. So this is preparing for a full-on K-5 math curriculum implementation for next year. And so Michelle's been doing a tremendous amount of work with the math coaches and with teachers, piloting the teachers to figure this out.
Right.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
So I had gone over earlier in the year kind of exactly what Karen was just talking about, but just kind of the, the work that the Math Program Review Committee has been doing. So tonight, I'm really just updating you on where we are. So we are piloting three programs. So we're piloting Bridges, Illustrative, and iReady. We started the actual pilot right, right before. So some teachers started right before February vacation, others started right after February vacation. So all of our units, our pilot units will be done by April 14th. They're done. On April 6th, we sent a reflection survey to all of the pilot teachers for their feedback. So the committee had created a very comprehensive rubric based on the needs that the teachers had shared with us. So the pilot teachers were asked to just reflect on every piece. So reflect on assessments, reflect on cultural responsiveness, reflect on accessibility, differentiation, everything. On Wednesday, May 3rd, so next Wednesday, all piloting teachers are going to meet with the Math Program Review Committee. This is going to be an all-day event, starting at 7:45. So we have all three pilot groups coming in. So 7:45 to 9:15, iReady teachers who have been piloting will come in and meet with the committee. 9:45 to 11:15, illustrative pilot teachers will be coming in and meeting with the committee. 11:45 to 11:15 will be Bridges. And then the next day, on Thursday, May 4th, the committee will be meeting from 3:00 to 4:30 to hopefully come up with a decision regarding a program. It is a really, really big decision. It's a big purchase for a district. We're getting tons of feedback. We also did some site visits. So we went to Needham to go and observe illustrative in action in Needham, which was a fantastic visit. We went to Mendon Upton to observe Bridges. So we went to a typical English classroom. And they also have a very robust Spanish immersion program as well. So we were able to see Bridges in a Spanish immersion classroom. And then for iReady, we were able to go and view iReady at their regional conference where they actually had teachers who are using the program with their students do model lessons for teachers. So we were able to kind of get in there and like observe what they were doing and assessments. Coverage was hard on these days, so not everybody was able to attend. But teachers, all the coaches, whenever we were able to get teachers free from their buildings, they attended. So that's kind of where we're at. The committee that, we're very anxious to make a decision. I think that the, lots of interesting things have come out of, just through discussions about math practice and where we want to go and where we want to be. These programs are all very, very different. Where we have Bridges that is super conceptual. And then we have Illustrative, which is, it's very exploratory, so there isn't a lot of instruction. It's, let's take a look at this concept, but I want you to figure it out first. And then we're going to report back. So it's a very different style of teaching, and kind of iReady's in the middle. So they're all three very different programs. But hopefully on May 4th, we'll have a decision. So we'll see where that is.
Great.
And Paul?
It is next week. And this has been a process. We started this last spring. So it's been a very, very comprehensive process with surveys and research. Because we're only going to bring in programs that have the highest ratings in any of...
I was just going to say, I believe, per the program, that all three of these programs have been rated by DESI. Very high quality programs.
Correct.
And did you say Bridges is the only one that has the Spanish component?
All three.
Oh, all three do?
Yeah, that was a non-negotiable. So if a program did not have a Spanish component, we didn't pilot.
Okay.
And everything, the only, the Bridges, it's the only program with teacher materials. Everything's student-facing, comes in Spanish. The teacher handbook is English. I spoke with Mr. Jones and Liliana regarding that concern, and they wanted to move forward with it. So we'll see what their feedback is after trying it out.
Great.
Great.
Let me just go right into it.
Oh, yeah, so do you mind if I just ask?
Oh, yes.
On that piece? Oh, no, I'm forgetting my, oh, I think my question was, alright. So the review committee will make a decision by the end of the school year. And then the plan is that the program will effectively start implementation for the next school year.
Next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
And this is the capital improvement plan. And I mean, this is an expensive endeavor. Jeannie Downs, I believe, you helped to make sure that the money was in the capital improvement plan to support the implementation.
Oh, I think we all did. There was the capital better, right?
Yeah, and I, I think you did like a little extra push at the end. Like, everybody did. I thought you did a little extra push, but I don't know. Any other questions about this? There is one more topic that I was hoping that Michelle could touch on.
Yeah, that's great.
So I'm officially done with my, with the active superintendent report. Under financial matters, there were a number of grants that we were hoping the school committee could officially vote to approve. And I was hoping Michelle could speak to them because she did a lot of work on submitting these grants and considering to what they are and the positive impact that they'll have.
The first one is the Financial Literacy and Implementation Grant. This is a competitive state grant. We received this grant last year for $15,000. We received it again this year for $15,000. We use this grant up here at the high school. Last year, Mr. Douglas ran a financial literacy course. It was, I think it ran, I think, six Saturdays in the spring. It was a virtual experience. Kids signed up. We also offered internships if the kids wanted to at a financial firm in Wellesley. This grant gives us the opportunity to pay the stipend for him to teach the course. We purchased books, certification exam costs, tablets, like these writable notebook tablets. I mean, it's whatever we needed for this course. So we got this last year. We got it again this year. So Dr. Mizuguchi just reached out, I think like two weeks ago, to figure out how we're going to spend it for this year. I'd love to see it expand a little bit. We had, we had a good turnout last year. I think we just have to advertise it a little bit more. The feedback we got from parents, they absolutely loved it. And actually wanted more, and wanted it part of curriculum, and we need to do this more often. Because it was a virtual experience, kids were home, so parents were hearing it. And they just thought it was a fantastic experience for their child. So we received it again, so it was, the total's $15,000, so we'll have that.
Is it virtual again this year?
It doesn't have to be. Mr. Douglas decided to do it virtual because he thought it was the time of the year. And making sure that if there were any Boston resident students, that they would be able to participate.
And it was Saturday, is what it was.
And it was Saturday. And it was six consecutive Saturdays. And his attendance was spot on, like lots of kids attended the entire experience. It's a great opportunity. And like I said, there's opportunity for an internship in Wellesley at like this financial firm. And we paid for any student that wanted to take different certification tests. We bought the study books, everything. So there, and there was no charge for this course. So we'll hopefully be able to offer it again this year.
That's great.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, a few people I remember talking to me and saying that something like this would be wonderful. So it's really, it's really great.
Yep. The second grant, this is the Teacher Diversification Grant. This is in the total of $7,923. This is something that Wayland's had, I think, for a few years. This just helps with diversifying our existing teacher staff and retention. The state does require us to, there's three different ways in which you can use this money. So you can do loan reimbursement. So if you have, this is just for teachers of color. If you have a teacher who's going to take professional development or continuing education courses, we can pay part of their tuition, relocation assistance, and signing bonuses. We've signed on for signing bonuses and loan reimbursement. So those are the two options that Wayland has put in for. So we got approved again this year for $7,923. Carolyn Hahn does a lot with this. So this is kind of like her, her grant, but we got it again this year.
That's great.
The last grant, really excited about. I know Dr. Mizuguchi and I will be here, I think, at our next school committee meeting, talking more about our innovative pathway. This was something, this was one of Dr. Vizzi's visions last year. So we started this work last year, but really hit the ground running this year. This is a year-long process. So I wrote this grant, I think in September, to help us go through the process of planning for this innovation pathway. And we got it. So they awarded us $25,000 to help us with the planning. So Allison and I and Hayes...
Harp Thompson.
Harp Thompson worked on the Innovative Pathway Grant this entire year, along with lots of collaboration with high school teachers. And we're really excited to announce that DESI has officially awarded us designation as an official Innovation Pathway, which is really, really exciting. There's been a lot in the news, the new Secretary of Education. This is like his big push right now, Dr. Tuttweiler. So there's a lot more money coming our way. So I don't know our total yet that we'll get from our Innovation Pathway designation. But we'll also get an additional $50,000 for more planning for this year. So I have to write that grant in the next couple of weeks, but this is the Innovation Pathway Grant. So we can use this, it's really primarily used for professional development. So everything that we need to prepare the teachers at the high school for this innovation pathway. If there is any instructional materials we need, if there's another course that we're offering. So one of the courses will be a project lead the way, engineering course. We have to pay for professional development for teachers and any materials. This is where that $25,000 can be spent.
That's great.
And Allison and Michelle, I hope that they can come back sometime in the near future to talk about what this is going to mean for next year at the high school. And as Michelle alluded to, there's a pretty decent amount of additional grant money that we're going to be receiving to help support the addition of this pathway at the high school next year. So they'll come back and give you more information about this.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And I think we needed a vote to approve the grants, is that right? That's right.
Yes.
So just one more?
It's not, maybe it's not yours.
It's food.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's tough.
So there's a food service grant in your packet for $10,000. Mrs. Judd applied for this. It wasn't a competitive grant, he just had to opt into it. We can use the $10,000 essentially by local produce or whatever's available, local providers. So we were awarded the $10,000. Lots of good numbers today.
Yeah, really.
That's great. Okay, so I think we just can do one motion to approve all the grants?
I need that we approve the grants, that's presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes? Thank you, Michelle. Sure thing. Thanks, Tom. Okay, so the next item, oh...
Local update.
Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Absolutely. I feel like I didn't do it.
Yep.
Just so you're listening.
Uh, let's see, the local roof project update, PHEPC update, is that...
Yes, that is. We have a couple of notes. Okay, so the roof's been on, I don't know, about six months. And so they just had the infrared review. I'm not sure if I'm really saying that term right, but right? Which is a typical thing to have at six months where they kind of make sure everything's working. There are a few spots they need to look at. So that will be happening. The electrical inspection is next week. There's one more payment from the MSBA that Ben Keith is working on the paperwork for. Project has come in under budget, which is great. So some money will be going back to the town eventually when the numbers are finally worked out. I don't know what amount that is. And the next step are the solar panels. So if you remember, they're going to put solar panels on the roof, but that's what is not, the MSBA doesn't pay for that. So that's separate. And Ben is working with, it's now, now we have a sustainability person at town. And so that's when turned over to that person who's going to work on that. And Ben will be helping, but it's, I think it's her responsibility. People's are her. They're, I say they're responsible.
Do you know if it's typical for them to find those like spots with the infrared?
So I asked, I don't know, Tom could weigh in, but I asked Ben that question. And he said, yes. And he said, like, it's, it's like a heat sensing thing. And he said, it could be something, could be nothing, but it helps them to look. And like, if it's on a seam, it may just be that the seam's not fully, you know? I don't know, do you know more? That's about the extent of my knowledge.
They would pick up if a little water got underneath the membrane. So I think they can find a lot of different problems with that. It's just a requirement from the MSBA that that test happen.
Yeah, which actually makes sense, right? It's a good kind of quality thing.
Do we do that after the solar panels are installed to ensure that that's all done?
It can be done. You can do it whenever you like.
Gotcha.
Except for Carl Benderin.
Gotcha.
Got it. That's actually a fair spot, yeah. That we should ask for once it's done. I want to ask that question.
I think you should. Just because I worry about the roof. And I know for homes, especially when they're removed, it can cause a lot of issues. So I just want to ensure that with all this money we just put it on the roof, that it stays...
Right.
In tip-top shape.
Good question. Anyway, that's all.
Okay.
That'll be all.
Great. Okay, thanks. So then we can move on to policy matters. So we're skipping over the discussion regarding KDVA. So Erin, as a member of the policy subcommittee, do you want to address the other items?
Yep, and Harry may actually be able to speak to them more eloquently than I will.
I'm happy to do whatever you'd like me to do. Do you want to start off? You want me to start off? What would you like me to do?
I can just say, just quickly, that we really didn't have a lot of, as a subcommittee, input on ACE. It came out of, to the best of my understanding...
Yes, we worked with the Office of Civil Rights. There were some, some accessibility challenges at Happy Hollow. And we've worked with the Office of Civil Rights to address those on the facility side. And so Tom's been helping to do a lot of that work. And then on the policy side, part of finalizing and resolving the concerns with the Office of Civil Rights was to update policy ACE. And so in the packet, you will see revised policy language. And you will see, the language in black is the initial, or the existing language. And then you'll see notes in red or in blue. Those are notes from Felicia Vasudavin and from the OCR lawyer. So the Felicia Vasudavin, the district's lawyer, and from the OCR lawyer worked collaboratively to update that language. And so what's, what's being proposed here is everything with the blue and red additions. And so this has been reviewed by council. And as Erin alluded to, there isn't a whole lot of wiggle room here in that part of resolving this OCR situation is the school committee agreeing to this OCR-approved language.
Okay, great.
And there'll be a responsibility, I think, to have some sort of communication out to the community once the language has been adopted by the school committee. And I can help to facilitate that with Felicia.
Okay. Okay. That sounds good. Maybe what we'll do is, does anyone have any questions on ACE at this point?
Yeah, just looking at some of the changes.
We can move on to KEC, then vote, vote up after. That way potentially Ellen will be back. Either way, we sell core. After, that way potentially Ellen will be back, either way, we sell a quorum.
So Perry, kick in with me on this one, but.
Do you want me to tee it up?
I, well, I know that it's not actually the policy that we're changing right now. It's the procedures, which is like an attachment to the policy, and I know that, and Perry's going to give you more information, but Perry worked closely with the librarians to create this.
And I might flip that around, actually, the librarians did most of the work, and I was kind of along for the ride. We have some of the librarians here this evening, so if we have any questions, we can ask them, and if I make any errors, they can correct me on that. So this is, there's existing policy, policy KEC, public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials, and this is if there's someone in the community or someone in the school, students could also do this, who challenges existing materials, and usually when this happens, this happens with resources in the library, so potentially like a book in the library. There's existing policy that talks sort of broadly about how that would happen, but there isn't very much detail around the actual procedures. So the librarians worked and I met with them, but they're the ones who really did the heavy lifting on this, and they use a variety of different resources, I believe, like the American Library Association looked at some, started with some boilerplate language that is recommended by the ALA in these sorts of situations, and put together procedures for how to handle situations where someone has a complaint about a resource in the library. And so what you'll see, starting on that second page, is really just fleshing out the details of how the procedure would work, how a committee would be put together, who would be on that committee, some timelines. There's a form, so if someone were concerned about, when someone, if someone is concerned about a resource that's in the library, the goal is to first have conversations, understand what the concern is, there might be ways to address the concern, there are a variety of sort of tiers of addressing the concern, one tier might be that a parent might not want their child to check that book out. Sort of the most extreme tier is a request that that resource not be available to anyone, and so that's where there would be the most significant process that would need to be followed. So the librarians worked on fleshing out the details of how that process would work. Ultimately, the superintendent makes a decision and then brings that to the school committee. So this sort of subcommittee that would be created using these procedures would then help to support the decision made by the superintendent. If you scroll down, there's an official form that someone who's concerned about a material would fill out. So what I am proposing, or I guess what the policy subcommittee is proposing, is that the school committee adopt these procedures to help flesh out policy KEC. And we've been fortunate that I don't believe, you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not had a formal complaint. We have, I know of at least one instance at the high school where I think a student had a concern about a resource, and so the librarian there was able to work with that student to help to resolve the situation. But this is something that certainly can't happen, and you know, you read about this happening in other communities, so if it were to happen, we want to make sure we had a very straightforward process that the community would understand and be able to follow in registering their complaint, giving the superintendent and the school committee a clear way to consider that.
Yeah, I think this flushes out, you know, and makes it really clear, concise, and I want to thank the librarians for all their work on this, because I don't think it was easy. So I appreciate that, we all do.
So Erin, the policy hasn't changed, that's the one that we have, right?
Yep.
And we didn't have these procedures, the procedures are new?
Correct.
Just want to make sure.
Did not exist, that's correct.
Right, they didn't exist before, and the form did not exist before.
And we need to approve the procedures?
Because it's part of the policy?
Oh.
We do, we do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind doing that, I just.
It's kind of like that form that goes with the facilities usage, the guidelines that we update, so we don't actually have to do anything to the policy if we want to change the procedures at a later date, like the policy stays the same and the procedures can be.
Right. So we have procedures.
Correct.
Separately from the policy.
Correct.
So we don't have to change the policy.
I'm good.
Yeah. This is great, thank you, thank you. Thank you all for doing this.
I can tell a lot of work went into it.
Yeah, a ton of work.
I think, I, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a minute, so I didn't hear exactly everything you said, Dr. Graham, but I think you were saying that we haven't, this hasn't been an issue thus far?
Yeah, we haven't had, and the librarians were the ones who identified, we don't have, there's the policy, but okay, then like, what does it actually look like if we try to go through this process if we were to have this happen? And so they were the ones who really drove the idea of, you know, putting this together, looking to different resources to try to identify what would be the best way to approach that, reached out to me, we had some conversations, talked about, you know, the process to bring it to the policy subcommittee and then bring it to the school committee.
Great.
So they're the ones who really identified this is a need and then did the heavy lifting to put it all together.
That's great.
So you guys looked at the subcommittee?
Mm-hmm. Not so we found any issue with it, I mean, it was pretty comprehensive.
Yeah.
Well, it's great that we're being proactive on this matter.
I was just gonna say, they were proactive, and it's now there, and knock on wood, we'll never have to use it.
I know, well, unfortunately, I know many of our surrounding communities are dealing with this, so.
Yep.
Great, great. So.
So we want to put both out for comment?
Yes.
Okay, I move to put policy.
ACE.
ACE and KEC with the, including the procedures, out for public comment.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes, great.
Thank you again, lady.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we can move on to preparation for town meeting, review of the comments for the articles, and discussion of the fast facts.
Do we need to go to that email first?
Yeah.
I did, yes, I did email you my, the remarks, the notes that I had put together for remarks.
And so I had, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
So Chris, I think the budget amount is actually not correct in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, what we're voting on is the, not the adjusted amount, we're voting on the actual amount, we voted on, looked up to make sure, but our amount is 48,803,195. With the number that you have in there is when it suggested putting the utilities back in.
Oh, okay.
So.
Let me, um.
And so I don't know, like, so I think you should say the number that we're voting on, obviously 48,803,195, and then that's, that's 3.5% or something, it's in our, it's in our little chart, in our budget book.
It is.
It's 3.5%, and then I would then say the utilities thing and say it's actually 5.8%.
Okay.
You know, apples to apples, you can even say the other dollar round if you want, but we're not, but I think it's definitely important that we do the comparable, say the comparable at least percentage.
Yeah, absolutely, I, the number I took, I took it off of the slides from one of our presentations, but I must have taken the wrong. So what was it, 48 what?
48,803,195.
All right, all right, I will make that adjustment.
And then I was wondering if you wanted to mention that it doesn't include the COLAS. Is that in there? I didn't see it, but.
I can't remember if that was in it all.
I did not write that in there, but I can include that.
I think we should, because we've said that the whole time, every number we've put, we asterisked, say doesn't, because what's going to happen is next year, when they look at the budget, it's not going to match this number, because it'll be adjusted for the COLAS, you know, our FY '24 budget.
Okay, so I'll, after I say the amount, I'll say that it does not include.
COLAS, yeah. Those are my two names, sorry.
Nope, nope.
Okay. And I did, as you can see, there are a couple places where I put question marks, just because it's just a number that I have to grab, and I just didn't have a chance to get the number. So for example, FTEs, I think is a place where I have it in there, but I've just put a placeholder question mark.
My only thought on wording is to add in the word necessary in line two of your in summary paragraph. We believe it is reasonable, necessary, and appropriate. That's my only thought.
Reasonable, necessary, and appropriate, okay.
Other than the numbers, which do you need to do that?
Okay.
Otherwise, good job, Chris.
Thanks.
Do we need to vote on that or anything? I don't think so.
I don't think so. And are you gonna, you're gonna speak to the specialized reserve fund article through that?
Yes, I'm going to do that as well, and I don't have that on this sheet. But I have the bullet points that you gave me, Jeannie, that you used when you spoke about it, so I was gonna use those.
Okay.
Should I go through those right now? Would that be helpful, or is?
If people want, I don't know.
Okay.
I went to the motions meeting, that's what Chris is.
I figured you did something for them.
Yeah, I went to the motions meeting, which was the day we're going to tax day.
That's right, yeah.
Of course, Chris was probably like.
I'm sorry, I just can't.
Nope.
Okay, so unless there's no comments, those were, that's everything for the articles, it's just the discussion of the fast facts, right, that we were gonna?
Yes, except I think we should post, Diane, can we post the meetings like we did last year? I looked it up and I found the thing, but we should post, just so we can talk to each other.
For town meeting, yeah.
And what we did last year, I noticed, was, you can look at the thing, but we posted for like a half hour before or something, so that with the agenda item, discuss any town meeting business in case we need to talk ahead.
So what time did it start?
Starts at 6:45, oh, it's on my calendar, well, let me see.
Yeah, you just sent that.
6:45, Monday, May 1st, so we should post for the first and the second, I think.
Six or 6:50?
I don't know, the people.
It starts at 6:30?
Starts at 6:45.
Oh, 6:45.
6:15. 6:15.
And did you meet, you met at the high school fieldhouse, or?
Well, that's such a good question, because last year it was outside, so we just called it outside. I guess at the fieldhouse, unless we.
Or you want a classroom?
We've done a classroom before, but I'm not sure if we have anything yet to talk about. And we, you know, I mean, it starts then, but we call it to order when a quorum gets there.
I'll just say Wayland High School.
I think that's, there you go. And the fast facts, that was something that Tom and I talked about, so.
A lot of people working on a lot of pieces of it, we should have it all together tomorrow.
All right, so fast facts, you probably don't know, but in the past, but we didn't do it last year, we had this little book called Fast Facts, it was just like key things that people would ask questions about, so you could look it up. Last year, we were at the meeting and a question came up, and there was a lot of calculators out and everything, and so it's just easier to have it all like in a book, but so I asked Tom what he thought about doing it, and he nicely said he would.
Yeah, that'd be great.
To make a suggestion.
Much easier to have the information available quickly.
Yeah.
I think we should put that it's going to be fieldhouse. I don't want an issue, I don't want it to be specified that we're going to be at the fieldhouse.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless we think we're going to have a classroom, then let's just.
No, we can just put fieldhouse, Diane, you can do fieldhouse for that.
And if we, you know what, if we have to change our classroom, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll update it.
Yeah.
Okay, is that everything for the town meeting?
Okay, so, Tom, do you have anything?
I'll have the book hopefully tomorrow.
All right.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll be there.
Yes, we will, absolutely. It's the first time in a while that it's been on a Monday evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on the, yeah.
Okay, so update on the anti-racism resolution, including plan to display in school buildings.
Oh, that's me.
Yes.
Okay, so let me go back to my Google Drive. So this is something that we talked about at the Boston meeting a year ago, not this last one, but a year ago, was the anti-racism resolution was adopted on January 27, 2021, and we talked about getting it in at the next Boston meeting, so the next year we talked about putting it in the schools, and, you know, for a variety of reasons, we haven't done it yet. So one of my things I really wanted to work on was getting this in the schools. So Caroline, Carolyn Han and I sat down and talked about it, and I then followed up with Perry. And so basically, what we would like to do, if you guys are good with it, is print the anti-racism resolution on a fairly large frame, and hang it in each school building, as well as central office, so that people can see it. Caroline, Caroline has some ideas, let me say Caroline, Caroline has some ideas about how it will, how teachers will integrate it, you know, when they're talking about other things each year, but I think that's kind of a separate conversation. This goal is just to get it posted. In your packet, you'll see the resolution, which this is taken from the website, and when Carolyn and I took it from the website, on the website, it was still in the memo form of us being asked to approve it, and so we just cleaned it up a little, like we took out the memo part of it, we just like left it as the resolution, we added the date it was adopted, and then changed, did a couple grammatical edits, which you'll see, like we said, the district, the district, as opposed to every, and we changed, it used to say diversity, equity, and inclusion, we just changed inclusion to belonging, because that's what it's called now in Wayland, and that was really it. Caroline felt it was important to put the school committee members' names who were there when, who approved it, so she added that, I think. I don't have a feeling one way or the other about that, so people can decide what they want. And essentially, if you guys are okay with these grammatical changes, we'll just, that will be the resolution, and they'll put it up on the website this way, so that it actually looks like the resolution as opposed to a request to approve it, and then we'll print it out and hang it. And I am happy to, unless one of you wants to take it out, I'm happy, as a community member, to make sure it gets printed and delivered to each school.
Can we remove the adapted from the MAS D resolution, which can be found here part?
Well, I think Caroline thought that was, this is, so let me back up, the administrative admin council put this together, and back in 2021, and so we were trying not to change the content at all.
But that's not part of the resolution, and you can't click to it from the.
Oh, you mean when we print it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, and we could keep that online if we wanted, if someone wanted to click on it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Perfect, yes, very smart.
And maybe center our logo or something.
Yeah, that logo part Caroline just added for fun, I mean, not for fun, but like, yeah, we can move that around.
Other than that, I don't know.
Other thoughts?
Great.
Are you okay?
Okay.
I'm okay too.
All right, and do you guys want your names?
Well, I just was wondering why.
I'm not sure.
Did she express in the reason?
I think she thought it was important for people to see who was on the committee when it was approved. It was kind of like the Declaration of Independence. I don't know, I can ask her.
It just seems, because isn't she feeling like all committees, past and present, would be committed? I mean, it just seems, I mean, I don't really object to it at all, it just seems very, seems odd, right? Like the future committees?
I have to agree, and I could care less either way, but it does seem.
The future committees are not as committed?
Yeah.
Or that somehow the people who happened to be on the committee the day this was adopted are somehow special?
Yeah, I'm fine with not having the names on it.
I don't care, I just.
I'll just let her know that we thought.
Well, she has an articulated reason, that would be great to know.
I will follow up, how's that?
Sounds good.
Love it. But I'm all about, I think it's great to put it on a big, absolutely, board.
And are you guys okay with me just following through and getting it done?
Yes.
Yes.
Even as a non-school committee member?
Yes.
In true Jeannie fashion, yes, please.
I will do it, okay.
You've been going out, you're doomed.
Well, this has been one of those things I've been wanting to. Well, this has been one of those things I've been wanting to get done, so.
I think it's great.
I'm glad. I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Okay. Uh, then the next time would be approving the release of, with redactions of the following executive session minutes that are listed on the agenda.
Those are the ones we looked at last.
The last time?
Yeah.
So this again is, we just have to announce in open session.
I move that we approve the release of the.
We don't actually.
Oh, we don't have to vote?
Nope. We just should say, we're announcing that the, that we approved the release with redactions of the executive session minutes from October fourth, twenty twenty-two, October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, November ninth, twenty twenty-two, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. So the next time would be the consent agenda. Does anyone have a motion for that?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No one's opposed. Everyone in favor, motion passes. Matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, any opposed? No? Okay, we're moving to executive session. I'll be, find my motion.
It's in there, Chris.
Okay.
There's so much in there, I don't know.
Uh, there it is. Yes, all right. I move to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Wayland Teachers Association, Wayland Educational Secretaries Association, Custodians, and Food Service as permitted by MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A three, as a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. Conducting strategy with respect to contract negotiations with non-union personnel, acting superintendent as permitted by MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A two, as discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. Reviewing and declassifying executive session minutes as listed as permitted by MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-two, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, January fifth, twenty twenty-two, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, April sixth, twenty twenty-two, and November ninth, twenty twenty-two.
And it's actually December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, just.
Oh, did I miss? Oh, okay.
I just think it was.
Oh, and just, oh, it's December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Okay.
Yeah.
Approving executive session minutes as permitted by MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-two, for December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, January fifth, twenty twenty-two, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, April sixth, twenty twenty-two, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, number one, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, February eighth, twenty twenty-three, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Reviewing the response to the April third, twenty twenty-three, and April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, open meeting law complaints filed by George Harris as permitted by MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A one, as a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the position of the school committee. And discussing strategy with respect to litigation, EZ versus Wayland Public Schools et al., MCAD complaint as permitted by MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A three, as a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. The school committee will be joined by Perry Graham, acting superintendent, and Diane Maribella, recording secretary, as well as Kevin Bresnahan and Courtney Mayo, attorneys. The school committee will adjourn an executive session and will reconvene in open session to discuss matters listed on the agenda. Do you have a second?
Chris, you said the, the MAS general law reference for the last thing, right? You did? That was in there, you're right? Yeah, you did? Okay.
I did, yeah.
Okay, good. Sorry.
Second.
Erin?
Yes.